Now call this workshop meeting in Jacksonville City Council order. You have a copy of the proposed agenda for tonight's meeting, also some minutes from the August 21st to September 4th, regular workshop meeting, or regular meeting and workshop meeting, and we have some consent items.
And Adam, Mayor, about the fee schedule change as a consent item also, please.
Fee schedule change?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the agenda by adding number 11 fee schedule change, and I would like to delete number 9 off for later discussion.
For later meeting, Mr. Ward?
Yes, yes, sir. Later, later meeting, thank you.
Second. Okay. Any discussion here and now in all in favor, signify. I say an aye. All opposed? So the first item tonight is a recreation update, and we're going to get a report on the summer swim and splash pad.
It's almost ironic to be talking about swimming and splashing after what we've experienced the last several weeks, but we do have some great information that Susan would like to share, and Nick would like to share with you regarding your summer activities. So with this, I'm going to turn it over to the recreation staff, please, Susan.
Thank you very much for having me. It is, as Dr. Woodruff mentioned, it's a little odd being up here, given the last few weeks, but we just finished summer, so I'm just here to give you an update on our summer activities. Nick Broniger here heads up our special events division, along with Amanda, our newest hire in that division, and they, they are in charge of the summer events and aquatic facilities, including the leasing of the pool at Holiday City and the second splash pad at Northeast Creek.
Excuse me, summer's not over with you. You may be over with summer, but it's supposed to be 90, 90, 91 this, the rest of this week, so just...
Yes, sir, I, yes, you're absolutely right.
Okay.
This is a picture I'm going to reference in a little bit later, but this is, these are kids that we service from our summer day camp at Holiday City Pool. They're all in matching shirts. That was a new thing that we were able to do this summer, so I'll show you some information as we go along into it. But we had a great summer. As you'll recall, last summer, we actually started a little bit later in the calendar year. That should be, yes, May 26 was Memorial Day weekend, all the way through Labor Day weekend. So we added a month to this summer, and it actually worked out very well. Same operating hours we did last year, which was Monday through Saturday, 10 to 4, and then closed on Sundays. Attendance, you'll see here that we have, May slash June is primarily all June, July, and August. We want to show you that we have what we would consider the public, which is our residents and non-residents, but they're the public in general, adults and children, and then you have the Holiday City residents. When we get into revenue, you'll see that we do a different charge for children, which is $1, $2 for adults, and then we do not charge the Holiday City residents, which is why we want to track that as well. You can see that Holiday City residents definitely utilize the pool in that first month. They far number outweighed the average daily attendance, and then it kind of levels off for both July and August. But for the most part, it, there was good attendance numbers, and I'll show you more on that. Here's the cumulative number. Cumulatively, we actually, you'll see that last number is 595. That's the number of kids we were thrilled to be able to take our summer day camp kids. It's a win-win. Last year, if you'll recall, we utilized the country club pool. This year, we said, well, we have the pool at Holiday City, and we, we have our own lifeguards, why not send those kids in our own program to basically our own public pool, and it worked out phenomenally. The kids enjoyed it, the staff really enjoyed it, and it just worked out really all around. So it was definitely a win-win, and we were able to put 600, almost 600 kids through just being able to swim for the summer, which is nice. I'll go ahead and mention, too, that the attendance number compared to last year, give or take, we, including the kids, is about 1,000 more from last summer. So we certainly were able to service quite a bit more, even given that August was a very wet. Seems like such a long time ago, but you'll recall, we had several, several weeks of rain upon rain and storms in the month of August. Operating costs, this is what we reimburse the Essentia folks. They, they purchase all the chemicals, they do all the pool, the technician out there. What we provide are the lifeguards, the attendance, and all of the amenities as far as, you know, that goes, operating the pool, but we don't really touch anything as far as the chemicals and the maintenance of the pool. I will add, new this year also was, Nick and his crew and Amanda, they were able to operate a concessions stand. I won't say stand, but we had some basics, water, chips, I think were the most popular.
Yeah, watering chips were, we wanted to keep it simple because they were trying to check in guests, and the tenant had multiple responsibilities, so more they had to worry about. And we just wanted to see what the feel was, if they were interested in purchasing some stuff was there. So I think it did pretty well for 50 cents for chips and a dollar for water. We weren't going to charge a whole lot for them because they're already coming in the pool, but it did pretty well for the first year, about.
Yeah, water and all that good stuff. So it wasn't a huge add-on to the revenue, but it was just something more of a convenience for, for our patrons. Some of the challenges I just mentioned were the, the weather. August was a very challenging weather. I don't know the number of days we ended up closing early, but it was probably, well, more than half. It just, it's unfortunate that you just can never anticipate when a storm comes through. They roll in, as we all know, in Eastern North Carolina, a storm rolls through, and unfortunately, every time lightning strikes, they have to close the pool for 45 minutes. That's American Red Cross rules. So 45 minutes on the day of only six hours, if you have it in the afternoon, it pretty much, there's no point in staying open at that, you know? So there was a lot of those decisions that had to be made. I will say that recruitment of lifeguards is becoming more and more of a challenge because we started in Memorial Day. The high school students, they're not quite out of school yet, they may not be certified yet, and it posed some challenges to start until that second week in June when students got out of school. We did recruit internally from our HR office. I know you're aware that we kind of did a temporary positions with this HR office, and that worked out very well. I'll give kudos to Kimberly and James in that office because we were able to recruit fairly quickly, get them on board, get them up to speed, and then we were able to save that overhead cost of those lifeguards and the attendance. So that worked out really well, but just getting them was a challenge. Some of the rules is obviously is just awareness on making sure our patrons are aware of some of those rules. We require parents with children of a certain age. Not everybody wants to be with their child, but we require that. We require swim rules, that's American Red Cross standard. Not everybody necessarily wants to go through that. Obviously, no running, no horseplay. So there's some things that we had to enforce. They're normal. I don't think that's anything outside of normal pool operations, but nonetheless. And then we do hear feedback. People don't like that if there's lightning strike, they may not have seen it, they may not have heard it, but if we see it and hear it, then we have to pull everybody out, and we got feedback like, that's not fair, I just got here, what am I supposed to do now? Again, that's for everybody's safety, and we're, we're pleased to report that we had no safety concerns as far as any incidences of, of, you know, children, you know, unfortunately. Fortunately, we have no issues.
Do you guys use a meter, like a lightning meter, or how do you determine?
I think they use a little bit of everything, technology on the phone, and then they just try and track it.
Yeah. Yeah, once, like she had mentioned, once you hear first, you do the time, and then if you hear any time during that period, it automatically resets. So, I mean, we know in Jacksonville, I mean, I couldn't tell you how many times there, that nice afternoon shower and thunderstorm, or it could be clear and sunny here at the Commons, and I get called from my staff saying, hey, it's raining and thunder. I'm like, it's not here, it's beautiful. But, so usually in the late afternoons, we got that, and like Susan said, we close at 4, it was like at 2:30, 2:45. By the time it reset, 3:30, not a lot of people would come back out for that.
Yeah, that was probably our biggest issue with patrons, like they just got there and they were upset with us. Can't do too much about it, but it's just a learning curve as far as our patrons go. So that's pretty much it for the pool. Overall, it's a great partnership with Essentia. It is in line with what we expended last year, even given that we had a whole month additional. I think it just kind of comes and goes with the cost of, there it goes, of, we saved money on our staff expenses, and so it just kind of worked out in the wash. But it's a great partnership, so certainly, if, unless you hear, otherwise, I would anticipate, we'll propose it again next summer, but certainly, certainly to Mayor and Council. And then the other thing is, this is a nice picture, moving on to the splash pad at Northeast Creek Park. It is a phenomenal facility and a add-on to our park system, and I just wanted to kind of give you some updates on that. Moving into this project, kudos to the engineering department in designing this splash pad. We learned a lot from our one at Jack M Yet. Jack M Yet's a great system, don't get me wrong, but we certainly learned some things, and we implemented that in at the one at Northeast Creek Park. And that, one of the things that really helped was having a complete Vortex system. Vortex is the design company that does all of the, they, they do certain elements, but for Jack M Yet, we didn't have, for example, the vault and some of the cleaning and the pumping is not a Vortex versus what we did here at Northeast Creek. It's all turnkey, it's all Vortex, it's one distributor. And I cannot tell you that the amount of time saved with customer service and troubleshooting was tremendous. We also did some technology and have the ability for them to tap into the system and see everything. That was certainly an added timeframe, a time saver as far as efficiencies goes when there were some chemical issues or pump issues. The other thing we added there, knowing that it's got more trees, is the filtration system. We added a whole another filter before it gets to the pump house. That was at the recommendation of Vortex, and I think the staff can tell you that the chemicals and everything that makes that system flow seamlessly has a lot to do with that additional filtration system. So that was very nice. And then the other thing was kudos to Michael and his crew. They did a phenomenal seating around the perimeter, lots of great feedback. I think Amanda can attest to that there were lots of people taking advantage of that sitting area and just enjoying the additional shade aspects and, you know, just the splash pad in general. Some of the feedback we hear, we heard from people is they liked having two choices. They liked that one day they would go to Northeast Creek and then at Jack M Yet, because they're just really different parks, they have different amenities. They like the shade at one, but then they like the sun at the other. The other really nice option we had was when one splash pad had issues or concerns or cleaning or chemicals, we could shut it down and say, hey, go over to, go over here, or go over here. So we never left patrons without an option, which was just a nice thing to be able to offer them. They never were without a splash pad. There was always one open if, if nothing else. The, the shade was a tremendous asset over at Northeast Creek Park. The wall, we added, Michael's crew again, added the wall for drainage and for seating over at Jack M Yet. So that's been really well received, and it's just a nice opportunity for parents to contain those kids also. And then the restrooms, as you're aware, are much closer at Northeast Creek Park. They're right within eye, eye, eye sightline, so I think parents enjoy, they, they can have kids run to the restroom and run back, and they necessarily have to be as concerned. They don't do that at Jack M Yet. It's a much farther distance. I'm still worried, but...
On the restrooms, one of the things that Lily Gray and Community Development, they have some funds that they're going to be recommending that we build new restrooms there at the Jack M Yet splash pad. We're currently looking at hiring a designer to make minor modifications. We'll keep the same footprint and same general theme as the restrooms we've been using, but we believe that Community Development will be able to fund the total cost of those restrooms, so.
That'll be, that'll be a tremendous asset for some of the same reasons, absolutely. And that pretty much concludes it for our summer activities. It was a great summer, provided the weather was in our favor, but other than that, we're looking forward to planning the next one. Obviously, Northeast Creek has other projects, but, you know, moving forward with other splash pads, we're certainly here to assist and move forward however you see fit. Any questions?
As you all know, Jack M Yet facility was substantially damaged in the storm. Susan has prepared, as has Michael, as are the other department heads, preparing an outline of all of the facilities so we can give you a comprehensive list of the damage. Obviously, we had a lot of water and sewer issues, especially lift stations, but from a physical standpoint for the general fund, Jack M Yet is the major issue. The insurance company, which of course is the North Carolina League of Municipalities Risk Management Pool, they have not yet been here for an adjuster. We have begun to file various reports and claims for each of the damages, and we hope to have an adjuster here within the next several weeks. So, any questions for Susan, though, about what she's been covering?
And it's brought, it's been brought up to me. Has the staff from Jack M Yet been absorbed by the Commons now, or what's going on?
Yeah, yeah. Obviously, with schools being out, everybody's busy working, and we have lots of kids at the Commons, but we've relocated the two staff that are normally housed at Jack M Yet into, into the Commons, and we're sharing some office space as a result, but it's, we're making it work.
How are we going to handle the normal Jack M Yet after-school programs, though, without the facility?
So the, the good thing about the Jack M Yet, or the Clydeswin, I should say, is that they're on the same schedule as Northwoods Elementary. It's the year-round. So we are actually going to continue that program, but we are going to, and we're going to bus them and transport them to Northwoods Recreation Center. So we're going to absorb those kids. They're on the same schedule, so it's doable. We're going to take them from Clydeswin every day and to take them to Northwoods Recreation Center, and then they'll operate out of Northwoods Recreation Center. So we're able to adjust on that. Other programs, if you're not already aware, I will just go ahead and tell you that the biggest hit we're going to have with Jack M Yet is basketball. I think you'll recall that I was actually in front of you last year concerning our lack of space, and boy, if we don't ever have a lack of space now. And unfortunately, we're going to have to remove a whole age group from our basketball program. The five and six-year-olds is our youngest age group. It is a very popular league in our basketball program, but unfortunately, we just, the Commons is the only location. We still don't know what Northwoods Park Middle School, we practice and play at Northwoods Park Middle School, if you haven't heard, they're also damaged. We really don't know the, the whole fallout from the schools and cooperation with them. So we are eliminating the five and six-year-olds this year, and we are reducing the other age groups, unfortunately, because when you throw in practice times and play times, the Commons is nowhere near sufficient, and we're anticipating that we're going to get reduced at Northwoods Park Middle School, New Bridge Middle School, and, you know, possibly Commons Middle School.
Ms. Faptis, is there any type of agreement that we have with Camp Lejeune that we possibly can go over to maybe Camp Johnson or Camp Geiger and use their gymnasium for our students, or is that a risk?
We don't have an agreement. We can certainly look at that. I know that there's been conversations about partnerships. The challenge in the past has just been getting access and getting our citizens on to insulation without effectively getting a pass and getting them on, but it's certainly something we could look at. I'll be honest, I think everybody in indoor space is a challenge. I know that, you know, if we can use it and they're willing and we can make it work, we can certainly look into it.
We'll follow up on that. Last year, we had a flag football league that we worked in cooperation with the base, and to be quite frank with you, it just became a very difficult thing getting people on and off the base. Not off the base, but getting people on the base.
So the result of that, just some follow-up with the flag football, we did get them on base for two years. It very much a challenge, it was very much a challenge. So this year, we actually are still doing a joint league, but we're actually playing our teams on Phillips Park. They're still playing their games on, on their fields, but we're playing our teams against their teams on, on our fields, on, well, at Phillips Park, because it really, it really is a challenge to get those passes and to get them through the gate effectively.
I have an idea that we might need to work on.
Great.
All right?
Absolutely.
We might have some space.
Oh, flag football. That'd be great.
Got to talk to another board about it, but we'll see if we can work it out.
Any other questions?
I have a question regarding the transportation of the, of the after-school program kids. I'm assuming that you're going to have or develop some sort of secure way. Obviously, we're taking on a, a lot of responsibility, ensuring who gets on the bus, off the bus, you know?
Absolutely. So we do have some of those mechanisms in place because we transport quite a bit in the school, in the summer months, because we utilize actually the school buses. We have two buses of our own, and we'll just use those, but we do have mechanisms in place. All of our center supervisors, for the most part, are, they have their CDL, so they're certainly licensed to drive those, and we have safety checks for getting them on and off. But you'll be, we'll be utilizing our older, the, the older transit buses that we were so lucky to get from this, this guy back here. They're a little seasoned, but they have, they have four wheels, and sometimes they have air conditioning. Six wheels, six engines.
I must be the buses.
I'm not driving them.
What they're actually saying is there are several transit buses that have met the Ron Massey mileage limit.
Yes, those are them.
Which is much higher than the FDA level.
Yes, exactly.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you, Susan.
One, one last thing before Susan leaves. The Boys and Girls Club contacted us last week and mentioned some of the difficulties that they were having because they operate out of, out of Clydeswin. Susan was able to offer facilities for them. As it turned out, they were not, they didn't have the number of children they thought they were going to have. But our partnership, you know, while sometimes we feel like we're in competition with certain groups, when it gets down to crunch time, we find ways to cooperate, and Susan and her staff are to be commended for the cooperative feel and the way they were work, they were able to work out some suggestions for the Boys and Girls Club. So, well done.
Thank you, absolutely.
Next item, Mayor and Council would like to talk about is the transition plan for the Americans with Disability Act compliance. Over the last, probably, year, Carmen and Anthony and a group of folks have worked on this. Because we do receive federal funds for a number of things, we are required to make sure that we have an ADA compliance report. What we'd like to do is ask Carmen and Anthony to go through the transition plan. We're not asking you to adopt it tonight. What we are going to do, though, is give you an outline of the plan, show you the schedule, and eventually, it will be in front of you for endorsement, not for adoption. Anthony?
Thank you, Dr. Woodruff. Carmen, would you like to?
No, you go right ahead.
Carmen wasn't planning on speaking during this presentation, but she has definitely been a very strong asset for us as we've gone through this process. As Dr. Woodruff mentioned, we've been working on this for quite some time, behind the scenes, but we've been diligently working on it. I think one of the challenges with ADA is that, at least in our organization, it's not any one individual's responsibility, but it's our collective responsibility. And the team that we were able to pull together to, to make this happen was very much cross-disciplinary, a lot of very skilled people, very dedicated people. So we're going to talk about kind of a past, present, and a future, but before that, I'd just like to review what is ADA and what's its purpose, and of course, why does it apply to us? ADA, of course, stands for Americans with Disabilities Act. It was initially codified in 1990, and it remained largely unchanged until 2008, when there were some very substantive changes made to that law. It's broken down into five titles, and Title II is the one that mainly applies to us as city government. We are a quote-unquote "public entity." ADA purpose, it's really a mandate to eliminate discrimination against disabilities. That's the long and the short of it. But at the same time, it also creates all the standards that we currently live by and build by that allows us to, to help eliminate those discriminations or eliminate those barriers that folks with disabilities have. Of course, government establishes the governmental role in enforcing standards, and that's one of the reasons why we're talking tonight. And then, of course, you can't do anything without congressional oversight. In 2017, it was actually January, so it's hard to believe we've been working on this for that long. We received this letter from DOT, and it basically said, because you're a sub-recipient of federal funds, meaning they get funds from the federal government and then they pass them along to us, which we used to do lots of really good things, we need to talk to you about ADA and make sure that you're compliant with all of the federal regulations. So the, the responsibility of compliance follows the chain of the money. So it's passed down from the federal government to the state government, and then from the state government to us. So we're beholden to the state, and the state is beholden to the federal government. Interestingly enough, there were only at the time looking at cities of greater than 50,000 people. They started with Charlotte, and Jacksonville was number two on the list. I'm not sure how we ended up with Jacksonville being number two, but we did. At the same time, when all of this was said and done, we ended up being the golden standard. And in fact, Carmen ends up fielding a number of calls, basically referees from DOT saying, hey, how do we, how do we get through this process? Where, where do we start? What do we need to do? DOT is actually telling them to call us to help figure this out. So essentially, what we did, we started with a desk audit, and we went back as far as '92. I believe Mr. Bittner penned this one. Actually, probably chopped it on the typewriter.
We had computers back then.
We had, oh, okay.
Thank you.
We still have punch cards back then.
Punch cards, yes, there you go. Anyways, as far back as 1992, the city of Jacksonville has been proactive in working towards the goals of ADA. The challenge is, and I mentioned the amendment of 2008, the challenge between '92 and 2008 was there was really no requirement for you to update a transition plan once you developed it. So we did one in 1992, and we implemented all the recommendations, and that was that. Come 2008, and subsequent guidance in '10, '11, and '12, basically told us that, well, a one-and-done isn't enough. You have to update these things every five years. That's when we took on the 2013 update, which is a majority of what we provided to DOT for their review. They took a look at all of our documentation, and they said, looks great, other than there are three areas for improvement. Two of them are really simple. First was designation of an ADA coordinator. And because Carmen has done so much work in the past on ADA, she was a very logical fit there. Okay, so we just penciled her name in, checkmarked, that one was done. Designation of quote-unquote "responsible person," this is the individual who gets in trouble if we don't do what we say we're going to do. Okay, so...
Jerry Bittner, I hope.
Well, in 1992, it was. In 2018, it's this gentleman sitting right next to me. So I wasn't, I didn't, it wasn't my name that went online, on that line. It was, it was Dr. Woodruff.
Well, actually, I took, I asked for volunteers, and nobody called me.
We all hopped under the table, right. So again, that was another easy checkmarks to identify who is the responsible person. The biggest challenge that we face is, is that the city had changed significantly since 1992. Our geographic boundary was larger, we had more buildings, the rules had actually become more complicated, too. And the, the intent in this last one from DOT wasn't necessarily that we go out and we do the inventory today, okay? It was that we set up a plan for inventorying all of our assets over a reasonable period of time to see what is compliant and what is not. So fast forward to this past July, we got another letter from DOT. This one was from an attorney. She said, congratulations, you're off the hook. You are now, according to 29CFR 27.11, you are compliant. And it doesn't necessarily mean that all of our infrastructure is in compliance, or all of our buildings are in compliance, but what it does mean is that we've met the good faith intent of the law to identify our deficiencies and to work towards correcting those deficiencies over a reasonable period of time. Part of that approval included a mutual agreement, if you recall, of implementing some level of Phase 1 improvement by January of 2020. And we'll talk about what that includes here in just a few minutes. So all that being said, we've been able to develop this document here, which is the 2018 update, and of course, it says draft all over it because we're not, we're not to the finish line yet. There's still a lot that needs to be done before we can actually stamp approved on it. There's still a lot that needs to be done before we can actually stamp approved on it. But what we did was we modernized the plan to meet all the current day standards. We expanded it based upon the new guidance. We added some focus areas, actually just one focus area. In '92, generally, we just looked at buildings and rights-of-way, sidewalks, handicap parking spaces, et cetera. But in this particular case, we had to spend more time talking about communications, whether it be our webpage or G10, et cetera. Also mentioned the requirement there for updating, having a schedule for updating the transition plan. That's also included in this document. Our intent, our intent is to meet the minimum requirement by having a wholesale update every five years. That includes full public involvement, city council involvement, et cetera. But annually, we would update the plan internally, more of an administrative type of update. What do we do? What are we planning to do next year? Areas reviewed, already went over those, just some images of what we were looking at. From communications standpoint, again, G10, the city's webpage, even written communication. We have to make sure that we're formatting those things and presenting them in a way that is ADA compliant. Mentioned that Carmen has been identified as the ADA coordinator. And on our webpage, we provided a specific link that says, "If you have a disability and you need some type of accommodation, call Carmen. She'll figure it out for you." And we do have contracts and other things that are in place with interpreters or whatever, whatever might be needed to help support. Public buildings, this is primarily what we were looking at because these are our primary deficiencies. On the right, you see the brand-new park-and-ride lot. Beats all current-day standards. It's a great facility. We were just there a few weeks ago. Couple hundred feet away, we see a parking lot out in front of the commons. And it does somewhat meet the standard, but as you can tell right there, it could use a little bit of maintenance. So, it's not, in most cases, it's not that we're not providing, it's just that we may need to go back in and refresh a little bit. So, that's, that's a majority of the deficiencies from a building standpoint. And as you recall, we talked about this during the budget development process and the CIP, when we identified a certain fund that was set aside for doing parking lot rehabilitation. And then the last piece, of course, is the right-of-ways. Most of what we're talking about here are sidewalks. We see the vertical curb transition there. That's on Henderson Drive. We drive by that every single day. The one on the bottom right is in Northwoods. That was probably a 90s compliant treatment there. But if you look at the top right-hand corner, that's basically what we're being held to today. And again, it's not that we have to go out there and do all of this stuff right now, but in a deliberate fashion, over whatever period of time we feel is appropriate, we have to work towards correcting these things. So, for instance, some transition plans are 30 years long. Ours doesn't even have a sunset date on it. It's just, we're going to continue working on it until it's done. Again, the draft plan, you have it digitally, I believe, Carmen?
Yes.
Yes, it's been uploaded to you.
Includes updated policy that's consistent with the most recent regulations and updated inventory. And in fact, this document here is 200, what, 30 pages long? Something like that? Only 30 pages of it are the actual plan. The rest of it is the hard work that folks like Alan Baker and others have done in collecting data from all of our facilities, all of our rights-of-way, to make this possible. As with any good plan, you have to have an implementation strategy, and we'll talk about that more here in just a minute. And then, federal guidelines do require public involvement. So, that's the, that's the point where we are right now. So, we have a draft plan, and we would appreciate your endorsement to move on towards the public involvement phase. Looking at short-term implementation, these are what I call the low-hanging fruit, lower-cost things that we could possibly be working on. Again, this is just a draft. This is a recommendation, and it's subject to change based upon feedback from the council and the public. From a communications standpoint, really the only deficiency there, I mean, it's not even really a deficiency. It's a way for us to maybe provide better customer service, is to, is to create a training opportunity where we're teaching our frontline staff about disabilities and how to, you know, better, maybe how better to serve those populations. Also, what resources are available internally and externally to help overcome some of those barriers. From a building standpoint, handicap parking is the lion's share of what we should be working on. And again, there is some money set aside in the CIP for parking lot rehab. The $20,000 that I've included there is an estimate for basically bringing all of the deficient parking areas up to a standard that meets ADA. Kerr Street Park Sidewalk, that's just an example. There are four or five others of those where we're simply going in and putting in 50 feet of sidewalk or 100 feet of sidewalk. Projects that don't necessarily need design, don't cost a whole lot of money, things that we might even be able to do in-house. But those, again, are low-hanging fruit. Truncated domes, are we, are we all familiar with what those?
Maybe people in the public who are watching tonight will explain what a truncated dome is.
I can show them. Have to go backwards a little bit. So, a truncated dome is, it's actually a mat. It's a series of truncated domes. The top right-hand picture there shows a mat that's placed at every single wheelchair ramp where you're at an intersection. And my understanding is that those are intended to help with seeing eye dogs. Those are basically a visual command for them to help the person with a visual disability know where they are, know they have to stop there, and then proceed safely across the intersection. So, again, that's basically just gluing those things down on existing ramps that are almost meeting the standard. But the best part of this short-term implementation is that Deanna's found a way for us to use DOT money to start rebuilding curb ramps. And in fact, she's been able to earmark about $250,000 for us. Was it next year, this year?
Probably calendar next year.
Calendar next year. And so, that amounts to about 110 wheelchair ramps. And DOT is, at their cost, going to come in and replace. Some of those will be on Marine Boulevard. Some of those will be in Northwoods. So, it's just, we're trying to prioritize and implement strategically where we want those improvements to go. But that's a great way to use outside resources to help supplement this need. From a long-term standpoint, the only issue that, or the only challenge to overcome with, with communication is how to, how to, how to treat or how to create the closed captioning option with all of our visual outlets, okay? So, we're all familiar enough with closed captioning to know that it's just a, you know, it's just a button that you push on your remote control at home. And on the end-users, for the end-user, it's that simple. But in talking with Glenn, to have a system that works with G10, that works with Facebook, that works with YouTube, that, you know, whatever the social media things are, it becomes a little bit more complicated. But, but that is something that we're working on. Another good thing from a long-term perspective is, is that we really didn't have to add anything to the CIP, okay? But that's how we want to address the long-term strategy. Do as much of the short-term, bring as many things onto compliance as we can, and then let the CIP handle it from there. There are so many projects scheduled in there from a street rehab perspective, from sidewalk infill, utility rehab, building rehab, that simply all we had to do was say, "These projects that we have scheduled, they're going to include all the necessary ADA upgrades." And the fact is, is that we were going to do that anyways because that's the requirement. That's what, I mean, we already do that. But it, it brought us a very, what I feel is a very high level of long-term compliance by saying ADA is a priority with these projects. And then, again, using outside resources, we've talked many times about all the projects that are coming, tip projects, resurfacing projects. So, leveraging the DOT dollar where we can to make those right-of-way improvements.
Anthony, and those specific, like Kerr Street Picnic Shelter and all those, so funding for those would come through those individual entities? Or does it come through a different pot of money? Like, when you're working through a CIP on this, is it one funding mechanism? Or is it like, you know, let's, for example, Fire Station 4 needs X amount of dollars' worth of money to be in compliance. Would you filter it through that?
Actually, the ways that we will address this, the four-cent fund, so that anything we build new, we will make sure that it's in compliance. On the other hand, the four-cent fund, when you're, for example, you're dealing with Northeast Creek Park, as we add new shelters, we'll make sure that they are handicapped compliant. In time, some of the older facilities, such as Phillips Park, we will have to use the four-cent fund to address some of the handicap issues there. On the other hand, every year, the Powell Bill funds give us $100,000 for sidewalks. So, as we build new sidewalks or as we use that money to replace sidewalks or expand sidewalks, the nice thing is, there is no one source. And when Anthony and Deanna find us a golden egg from the DOT where you get $250,000 to really start addressing some of these things. So, you know, in time, it will be a multitude of funding approaches. Bottom line, though, is you should assume that over a period of years, the vast majority of this will be done by city money. If you're fortunate to find like the $250,000, that's great. Now, the other part that, as Anthony said, when you look especially on Henderson, just as an example, that sidewalk was, you know, there when, you know, when we were still driving something, horse and buggy, I guess. But the point is, that sidewalk probably has, pick a number, 500 places that violate the handicap ramp because of every driveway going. So, it's going to take us a long period of time. The important thing, though, is you're, you're being asked to endorse an approach that will show we are systematically moving forward. But there is no date that says by X date, you have to have full compliance.
Right. So, you'll just work it into a CIP yearly-based thing?
Correct. There's going to be a variety of approaches. Some of the money is already available. Like, if we can tap that, that parking lot fund to do some of the payment markings, that money's already available. The training, for instance, and communications, that's going to be an operating budget discussion for next fiscal year. And then, like Richard said, other projects that are more long-term in nature are going to be four-cent fund, capital fund type of decisions. But the good thing is, is that we're not taking a hit. Like, you got to do all of this within the next three years. Because I can tell you from experience, other communities that I've worked with have taken a hit, meaning that there were complaints filed against them. The Department of Justice got involved. There were consent decrees, and there was literally millions and millions of dollars spent over a very short period of time.
One thing, though, that you can be very proud of is the vast majority of your public buildings meet the handicap code.
They do.
I mean, when the, when Anthony and Carmen and Alan Baker, who else was on your team? Pardon me?
Danny.
Danny, Brian, Wally, Deanna. When they all went through the buildings, they were able to literally go through every building that was available to the public. Now, you don't have to, let's take, for example, over at the public, at the Public Works Complex. Some of those buildings are available to the public. Some of them are not. So, not every building that the city owns has to be handicapped accessible because it's not available to the public. On the other hand, almost every building we have is handicapped accessible, even though it may not be quote-unquote "available to the public." And you should be proud of the fact that you've built so many things over the last many years, and you have brought those things or those buildings into compliance. So, good work.
We're in a very positive situation right now, at least in my opinion. I think DOT would agree. Okay, so, next steps. Again, as I mentioned before, we're not looking for any type of decision tonight. Really, what we would like is for you to take the document, peruse it at your convenience, and between now and the 17th, if you have any feedback, please let us know, okay? Because on the 17th, we're hoping to roll this out to the public. To begin that process, we will have what we're calling an informational session, which is not going to be a workshop or a public hearing or anything like that, but it's an opportunity for folks to come in and talk to the staff about what's in the document, you know, and provide feedback as to how they might recommend that we change it or if they like it. Ultimately, we would like to have some form of council action in November, very likely late November. And one additional step that we're planning to take, between the 17th and the 20th, there are a whole host of support agencies, is what we call them. And actually, it's on page 12, if you want to look at it for future reference. But there are a whole host of local nonprofits and other agencies that are connected to persons with disabilities that we're going to go out and talk to individually.
Where will the information session on October 23rd be held?
Do we have a date? Oh, it's going to be.
An A and B.
It's going to be an A and B?
Okay. And this is more of a drop-in. You've all visited the DOT, as they've had projects where you can simply come in and staff meets you and walks around and explains. This will not be a session where you'll have a formal presentation then question. It will be a much friendlier setting where people can just drop in for five minutes, learn what they would like, and then other people will drop in during the evening.
At some point in the future, whether it be November or December, we will have to accept or endorse an updated transition plan. And once that is done, it's not that we're just going to put it on the shelf. Of course, we're going to implement it. But it's a continuous process for us. Like, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Like I mentioned, annually, we'll update what we've done and what we're planning to do for the following year. And then, every five years, we'll come back in a setting like this and talk about it again.
And the reason why I recommend you endorse it instead of adopt it, by endorsing it, you're making the commitment to move forward. But because there are budgetary matters that have to be part of your upcoming budgets, it's better not to adopt it. You know, it's semantics to a degree, but by endorsing the plan, you're authorizing the staff to move forward. Then, when you adopt your budgets each year, each year, you will actually fund specific components of it. So, I think they've done excellent work. Carmen, Anthony did his presentation. What would you like to add?
Nothing extra, except for the public's knowledge that we do have a complaint process, that you can go online or you can just contact me directly. If the public encounters any barriers to accessibility, they can just contact me. And this could be even in a business. It doesn't necessarily have to be a public building. If they're having difficulty accessing, you know, business goods for sale or their services, they can contact me. And we have a technical committee who can work with that business to help them become ADA compliant.
Thank you. Questions? Excellent work by the staff. Real quickly, if you don't mind, let's try to get the MPO transportation update and then maybe take a break. But, MPO, please.
Yes, sir. So, we try to do a transportation update quarterly. And of course, with the storm, the previous session got delayed. We were supposed to be here a few weeks ago, but that's why we end up with three transportation-type presentations in one meeting. But just to jump right in, we, we've seen this diagram. I can't tell you how many times. This is just a graphical representation of how our prioritization cycle works. And of course, this is the process that we work with DOT to identify and fund new projects, okay? It's a two-year cycle. We reprioritize projects that are kind of further out in the timeframe of implementation. And then, we try to add new projects at the same time. And I don't know how many times I've said this in this room, but there's more than $300 million worth of investment coming to our area because of this process. So, right now, we're in the middle of prioritizing projects. We have seen the result to some extent. Last time I was here, I mentioned to you that we were able to fund one new statewide-level project. And as you recall, there are three different funding pots, statewide, regional, and division. This is an excellent project. It's at McDaniel Workshop and Marine. We're going to add some new turn lanes on the side streets. And, but more importantly, we're going to widen a culvert that's out there to help address some, some maintenance issues. I'm sure if you've been out there, you've noticed how the slopes are failing. There are no sidewalks. So... So, this is not only a capacity improvement, it's also a maintenance improvement, and there are some ADA accommodations that are going to be added here, crosswalks, wheelchair ramps, et cetera.
Time period?
I'm not sure of the exact time period on that one, I think it's 23, but this is such a small project, and I should mention that it's also connected to another project that's just north of here, which is building a new road between McDaniel and Western. We call it the Trade Street Extension Project. That project is actually scheduled for construction, I believe, in '21. It is very likely that both of these projects will be put together, because they're really right on top of one another. Another good thing about this is that we're going to get a brand-new street out of McDaniel by the time it's all said and done.
And will we be renaming McDaniel for Mr. Bitner, or is that still underway?
Further discussion on that. We haven't, we, we haven't come up with a-
It's been under discussion for four years.
Well, we have to come up with an alternative. We've already got, we've got, we've got Lake Bitner, I don't know if we can have Bitner drive.
I like pickleball way.
Pickleball. We've also prioritized the regional level, which is the second-lowest level. Good news is, is that we've been able to fund the Western Boulevard's six lanes, okay? So from 17 all the way up to Gum Branch, it's going to be a six-lane divided roadway when that's all said and done. And then, we've also been able to fo, to fund a, excuse me, maybe not necessarily one of the higher priority projects, but it's a good one nonetheless, improving 258 out at Roadstown Fire Department Road. I think everybody is familiar with that intersection, and the fact that it, it's missing some turn lanes, and then the, the, that goes from Fire Department Road to Briar, Briar Neck, to, so we're trying to straighten that out a little bit, too, at the same time. Priorities that we're still working on at the division level, unfortunately, because the regional level ran out of money, we weren't able to keep the 111 extension on the tip. Excuse me. That is the project that runs between Gum Branch and, and 258. Even though it's not going to stay on the tip, we have been working with Mr. Alford, our new Board of Transportation member, and he is going to keep the project moving. They're going to keep it going through the environmental process, they're going to keep on designing it, and so hopefully, by the time we get back to the next cycle, there'll be enough money to put it back on the list. Ironically enough, we've already done that with two other projects on this list, Gum Branch Road widening and Henderson Drive widening, because as you recall, those used to be on the TIP, they fell off, and now it looks like they're coming back on. The reason we were able to do that is just through some calibration of the project scope. Ultimately, when Gum Branch is done, we'll have a four-lane divided facility from Henderson all the way up to Roadstown Road. And Mr. Warden really doesn't like that project, by the way. It's his favorite project. And Mr. Thomas doesn't like Henderson Drive at all, either. Another project that we think we're going to be able to fund at the division level is Downtown Greenway. You may or may not recall that we added that to the CIP for next fiscal year, I believe it is, a couple hundred thousand dollars. The scope of that project is to take the Rails-to-Trails Greenway from New Bridge Middle School all the way down to Riverwalk Park, and then connect it over to the Thompson Street boardwalk. So, it's in the CIP right now, but if we're able to get DOT money to pay for it, then, of course, that's additional CIP money that can go to other things. Network resiliency. This, resiliency is a big word these days, given the storm. And one of the things that we are going to talk about as an organization, meaning the MPO, is how do we overcome things like this? I believe we all know where this is. I believe we all realize that we were on an island for a good period of time as well. So, one of my responsibilities as our lead transportation planner is to figure this out. Because for, what, probably the better part of 48 hours, we weren't able to get anything in or out. We have two tip projects right here at this location, so we have opportunity, we just have to have the conversation. That same conversation ties into what we were talking about last time with interstate connectivity. We spent some time talking with our state delegates about this, there seems to be good support for having additional conversations, so we're going to continue to do that. But these two items here are certainly going to move forward together. They are certainly intertwined. Switching gears to transit, we provided some emergency transportation before the storm. This is our buses lining up to take some special needs folks to Goldsboro. And then, we also provided transportation during the storm. These are folks, and you'll see this as part of the video that you'll see here in just a few minutes, these are the folks that we were evacuating from Center for Public Safety over to the Commons. We did that on Jacksonville Transit. Interestingly enough, we used our professional driver corps for this lift. We didn't have that available to us during the storm, so police and fire stepped in. They did an awesome job. No training, they hopped right in, they did have CDLs, they did have credentials, but they made it happen. We will finish the park-and-ride before I retire. And that's no slight to Deanna, the project manager, or the contractor, they've both been doing great jobs, we've just had a very challenging year from a construction standpoint. But when we were on the tour, we talked about, you know, how it had, how it had advanced, and how it was paid for and everything, I think this is a great asset for that area. Last time I was here, I also mentioned that we were getting new buses, those buses are now here, we have five brand-new Freightliner vehicles, and these are a step up, certainly a step over the F-550.
You almost said the Chevrolet.
I didn't, I did not. It is a step up, this takes us from a light-duty vehicle to a medium-duty vehicle. And, and the good thing about it, from an operational standpoint, well, from a financial standpoint, they cost about the same as what we used to be, what we used to use, but from an operational standpoint, they're on the same exact chassis as our, as our dump trucks and other things, so there's lots of parts interchangeability, tires, wheels, brakes, et cetera. The main reason I put this in here is to just give you another, another cut at the, at the rendering shown at the bottom of the screen. We're hoping to have the buses wrapped within the next three weeks. So, if there are any reservations, personally, I think that looks pretty good. Very sharp design, media did this for us. If there are any reservations, please let us know in the next couple of weeks so that we can make adjustments. Moving on to signals, we all saw this. That used to have three additional balls hanging from that signal in the center. The bracket there on the right-hand side used to have a sign attached. What people don't realize is just the size of this infrastructure, that three-section head is almost four feet tall, and it's made out of metal. The sign itself is 18 inches tall by nine feet long. And it just, I mean, it ripped them all like they were made out of paper. This is by far the most widespread signal damage that we've had from any one event. In hindsight, one of the things that we've learned is, while we really like to have those overhead street name signs, we probably need to spend some time taking them down before an event like this. What happens is, they end up acting like a sail. So they flip and flip and flip and flip, and then when they get too tight, they unravel, and then they do it again. And so all those signal wires get kinked and bent and shorted out and broken, and that's why we've had, so far, we've already rebuilt six traffic signals in their entirety, all the wires, all the heads, everything. Those aren't supposed to be faced that way. Lots of that. It doesn't look like much, but when you're putting a computer in water, that causes a lot of problems. This used to be a camera. We never found those cameras. Fiber damage, a lot of that, too. Even today, we still have some fiber damage that needs to be repaired. Our priority was on getting major quarters up and running, particularly the 258 quarter, because it ended up being a main route for people getting into town, and even into Pender County and New Hanover County, but many quarters still do not have communication. We're, but we are working on it. And the response, lots of generators, you probably saw our folks out there dragging generators around. We learned a lot about generators over the years, and we've learned that while the one on the left works, it's not necessarily as good or as easy to use as the one on the right. We started the event with 22 or 23 generators, and we only have eight now that are still operational. The reason is, is because they were running and running and running and running and running and running. The, the last generator came offline this past Monday. So that's, I mean, we're talking about weeks of, of operation, basically.
But I will make the point, if you'll remember, after Irene, we gave you an analysis of things that we asked you to fund, and one of your priorities was to make sure that the traffic signal systems could get back up and running as quickly as possible, so we would not have to staff them as personnel. You did give us the funding, and we accomplished that. And this time, you know, we had all of the wiring, so it was a relatively simple matter of plugging those systems directly into the generator. So, the direction that you gave us and funded was successful. But like anything, as you've heard, many of those generators have now passed the mileage or hour limit, and we'll be looking to fund those again.
Ron might let those go. He might.
Might.
Did the heavy-duty ones last better, or, or did it make any difference? The little, the little ones, you know, obviously had enough wattage to, to do it.
So, just a little bit of history here, initially, when we started using generators, a lot of the signals still used incandescent bulbs, which required a lot more power than the LEDs that we have today. That's why we ended up with a whole core of those large, I mean, they're basically household-sized generators. When we switched over to LED, we found that these suitcase generators were much better for us to deploy, they had enough wattage, but they were much easier for us to deploy from a truck, you know, our on-call guy could carry one around.
One guy, 50 pounds, versus the other one takes two people.
Exactly, I mean, this one on the left is probably, what, 150 pounds, the one on the right is seven.
Seven?
Seven.
Wow.
Mr. Lazar even saw me lift one, so it's not that heavy of, of a lift, for sure.
I had to help him, but-
He did have to. I couldn't figure out how to get it started, right? But, but, but the point is, is that we, just as Richard said, we took the guidance, we took the resources, we implemented them, we had transfer switches at every single signal throughout the city, we didn't have that last time, we had a hurricane, or even the ice storm, you know, a few months ago. Made it easier, safer, more efficient for us to deploy these things. As we move forward, we would certainly look to buy more of the red type of generators than the gray ones. They each have their purpose, but for our purpose, the red ones are good. Probably saw a lot of this, too, our guys put in so much time. And five days after the storm, each one of them individually, I mean, they had more than 40 hours of overtime.
Do the pole lights hold up a lot better?
The, the mast arms?
Yes, one behind, you've got the mast arm behind and the, and the wire in front.
Yes and no. I mean, there's really no, for, particularly for a storm like this, that was so long in duration, there's no real good solution, but the mast arms do tend to hold up better than the span wire. But on the other hand, the span wire is easier to fix than the mast arm, so there are pros and cons. This intersection, this is 258 and 53, you probably heard through the grapevine that we were rebuilding this on Monday, it took them nine hours. And PD directed traffic the whole time. But another intersection that doesn't have mast arms only took us four hours to rebuild, similar intersection. So, there are pros and cons. Certainly, from an aesthetic standpoint, the mast arms are better. We finally got Mr. Bitner's sign fixed, just in time to put this up. And I mentioned the detour route along 258, we did have a fiber break out there, which caused us to kind of lose all communication, couldn't see the cameras, couldn't talk to the signals. We ended up getting a call from Highway Patrol before we even knew the detour was in effect, and they said traffic was just for days. And it was. When we went out there, traffic was backed up all the way past 111 on 258 by at least a mile. So that's just massive traffic backup. Because communication was down, we actually controlled the signals manually for about six hours. Later that night, the communication came back up and we were able to manage it through the ITS Center, the Traffic Operations Center. Highway Patrol was very happy about that, though, because they didn't want to, I mean, they were, their resources were needed in other places, they didn't want to have to direct traffic in all these signals. One of the great, great benefits of ITS. Lessons learned, on the positive side, we were much better prepared than we have ever been before. The transfer switches, the generators, our operating procedures, the additional employee that council approved for us this past fiscal, or current fiscal year, was key, that allowed us to have three aerial crews to go out there and turn heads around and make repairs to wires, et cetera. We sourced a lot of equipment from our, our friends in other departments, which helped us a lot. Support contractors were also critical, so by the end of that five-day period that I told you about, where the guys had so much overtime, DOT was able to get their emergency contractor in town. So at that point, we passed the baton on to them and said, our guys need a rest, you guys take it over from here. There, there is some room for improvement here, better coordination with the State Traffic Operations Center, you know, sharing information, where the detours are going to be and when. And then, what we found out during the storm, and a lot of people didn't believe me, particularly people that were out of town trying to get into town, we knew better about roadway closures than the DOT did for a very long period of time. And that's not a criticism of them, they were busy doing other things. We were trying to get goods and services into town, so we were doing reconnaissance everywhere with police and fire and other staff. So we had a better idea of what was open and what was not open. Having the ability to put that information into TMS and keep it accurate for DOT is definitely going to be something that we're-
I accessed ncdrive.gov, and it did not have up-to-date information. Even though they're telling you in all of their public service bots, access that, it was not up to date.
Well, and, and again, to their credit, this was a very dynamic situation, so a road would be open, and then two hours later, Mr. Jackson experienced that firsthand, two hours later, it'd be closed, three hours later, it'd be open again, you know, that kind of thing. So, it, it was very dynamic, but our ability to provide that information to the system will be very valuable in the future.
Yeah. One of the things, getting fuel tankers and even Duke Power vehicles in here for recovery, that was primarily because city staff knew back roads and was able to actually go out of the area and lead them through different counties to get here. And I think your staff has to be commended for thinking that those, knowing those ways and going the extra effort.
Lot of creativity there. There was a lot of creativity in getting people here. Overall, very positive feedback. There are some lessons learned, things that we can improve on, but I think the experience was very good for us and hopefully for the traveling public as well.
Mayor, if it's acceptable, we'll take a short break, we'll come back and finish the other items.
Okay, we'll recess for a few minutes.
Okay, we're back in session.
Well, keeping with the Anthony Prin story tonight, what we'd like to do is also give you an update on the multimodal center. And Anthony, if you would, walk us through this, please.
Yes, sir. Mayor and council, this is just a quick update from our last conversation regarding the multimodal center. I think we all know how, how exceptional Deanna's work is on projects like this. What we're finding out is that our architect is exceptional as well. I think Deanna and Richard and others would agree with that. It's definitely one of the best that we've worked with so far.
What's this gentleman's name?
His name is John Faribault, and his office is in Wilmington. He's basically, he's a little bit more than a one-man operation, is what I would say.
But not much more than one-man operation. That's what makes him so, you know, we like John Sawyer because it's a small firm, they get things done. We're sticking with the theme of John's, and John Faribault is likewise a small operation, and he knows how to get things done.
This is his project. I mean, literally, this is his only project until we're ready to bid it, so it's a good thing. This is what you saw last time, and what I mentioned to you is that we liked the concept, didn't really like some of the details, particularly the one-dimensional roof line there, the prominence or lack thereof of the tower. Even though it had some city features, you know, we weren't really kind of over the moon about it. See some features, it ties into the depot and Fire Station 2, et cetera. This is what the current design looks like. If I could, it's going to be a little clunky here, but let me toggle back to this. You can see what the roof line looks like there, okay? You can see what the roof line looks like here. There's more, there's a, there's a much more three-dimensional feel to it. And it's not just the roof line, because we also took a different approach to the tower itself. Rather than having it attached to the building and kind of recessed behind some of the maybe less interesting parts of the building, we brought it out, made it front and center. So again, I mean, to me, this is significant progress in the appearance. Looking at it from a perspective standpoint, I mean, I think this is something that we could be proud of once it's all said and done. Looking at other, the, you see the, what do you call them, retaining wall areas out front. Those are to protect landscaping, but at the same time to serve as public seating. Of course, we'll put treatments out there to keep kids from skateboarding on it and that kind of stuff, but it's just, it creates kind of a nice square type of feel right there in front of the building. You can see the breezeway. Remember, that was in the middle of the building. It goes all the way from the front to the back. One thing that we're going to have to talk about at some point in the future is, is the arch. And while it's a great feature to have, constructability is a little bit of a challenge. And Mr. Warden's nodding his head because all those bricks that we have to cut, uh...
And the other concern I have, though, that becomes a wind tunnel during a, during a major storm event, so that would be a concern for me as it sits.
You'll also notice that we've re-instituted the clock, because that's pretty much the symbol of the city hall.
That blew off during the storm, actually. Looking from the rear, what you'll probably notice is that we've got some black fixtures, or excuse me, window treatments here, black doors, got some white ones there, you know. We're not to the point of selecting colors, but he's just showing us different shadings of those, of those features.
The light ties in more to Camp of June.
It's a good point. I never thought of it that way, but yes, it does.
But I am concerned about that wind tunnel you see right there.
Let's see what we can do. I'm sure there's a way that we can baffle it or to make it more open or more closed. I don't know. Whatever an architect does to...
Probably a structural engineer probably would need to look at that. I don't know if he, if he, how much he's gotten a structural engineer yet at this point, but...
I can tell you from my years at App State, there are many of these, and they are wind tunnels. So that's a, that's a good, a good point that you...
Which is good on a 90, 90-some degree day, you know, it gets you a little bit of airflow, but a hurricane, it doesn't.
Or when it's negative two.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
Looking at it from the air, the light gray areas are where we would put our mechanicals. They would be easily accessible from the ground. Just as a reminder, the, the building in its entirety is about 14,000 square feet, seven on one side, seven on the other. Canopy that you see coming out the back goes to the bus platform where all the pickup and drop-off would have, would happen. The bus platform is intended to look like this. And Richard mentioned to you that we're going for the 1940s-type of bus station theme. See, we've got the pendant lighting in there, very simp, simple structural steel type of canopy. We've got the brick pilings for scale. The bus is kind of back there in the background. Moving towards the interior, again with the 40s theme, lots of wainscoting, wood treatment, casement windows. It's not very easy to discern what you're looking at here, but there's some of the doors, you can tell very prominently inbound and outbound, the wording like that would all be raised lettering, metal lettering, crease neck lighting, that kind of stuff.
Roof material?
I didn't bring that.
Roof material is going to be the, unless cost becomes a major factor, it's going to be the, the recycled product that we showed you several weeks ago. It looks like a shingle, but in fact, it's a recycled product that has a 50-year life.
It's old tires. That looks like slate, so it's a really neat product. And after I get done here, I'll go get the sample and bring it in, so you can see it after the meeting.
How's that compare with new?
As far as cost? As far as cost, or...
Yes.
Durability, cost?
Well, we, we don't have a whole lot of experience with this product, but what they told us is that it has a 50-year warranty on it. So to me, that indicates some pretty solid durability.
Yeah, my roof had a 30-year more warranty on it, too.
Is it still there?
It's up in my backyard.
We'll have to further investigate that, but this is definitely one of the options that we want, that we would like to explore.
Most of your, your metal roofs on commercial buildings only get a 20-year warranty is all you get on those things.
So you can see the, the ticket count, the ticketing area, the vending area, on the right-hand side of those vending machines, that's what we're calling the military hospitality... let me start that.
Hospitality.
Military hospitality area, where we're hoping to have a USO presence. We've been talking to them. I think we're going to be able to work through that. Just to wrap things up, military accommodations, again, that continues to be a high priority. We're working with the USO, and we're working with other agencies like RDU and Raleigh and places that have these type of accommodations to get pointers on what to do and what not to do. A good thing that we recently realized is that engineering was able to come up with a way to serve this area with gravity sewer rather than a force main. Very positive, at least from a costing standpoint. The site, the site has natural gas, and so that's great from, you know, a costing standpoint as far as operations. But given what we experienced with the recent storm, natural gas also provides an endless fuel supply for generator power, which is something that we want to explore there. HVAC has been challenging for us in, in buildings in the past. A good thing with our architect is he's doing what we want him to do and not issuing us a system. So we're providing him with feedback on what we want, and that's what he's going to include. And this is an opportunity, it hasn't been fully explored yet, but this could become a strategic location from an IT standpoint regarding data center and fiber connectivity. We're still working on that, but haven't really made it all the way through. The funding strategy still remains the same. At this point, I think we're really close on the budget. We haven't even really started the value engineering process, but I feel good where we currently are. The timeline hasn't changed as well. Our architect is moving very quickly, and if I remember correctly, his intent is to have this thing finished by the end of the year.
Correct.
Isn't that right? Yeah. So if everything lines up properly, we might even be under construction this coming summer. So really, the only question that I have for you at this time is, the things that I've shown you, are there any reservations?
Other than the breezeway and looking at the, I mean, you can see that we have taken to heart the issues of the roof, if you go back to, keep going back. I think you will agree that this arrangement of the roof that is shown here with the tower out front is a much better-looking campus effect than one long building.
One thing to, to put out there as well is that... One thing to, to put out there as well is that while we're looking at a higher-level investment for the public areas with the wainscoting and the, the wood treatment, the rest of the building is just going to simply be an office building. So, it's not gonna be a Cadillac facility from door to door to door to door. We want it to be nice where we're welcoming people, but otherwise, it'll just be like City Hall or Center for Public Safety with normal office-type treatments. Unfortunately, I'm probably not gonna have a window like that in, in my office, but I'll get to walk by that one on a regular basis. I'm calling good at that. Any questions or concerns?
One of the most important next steps will obviously be the opinion of probable costs as they come in, and then we'll have to go through value engineering to make sure within budget. One of the concerns that we are having, though, as Mr. Warden can, I'm sure, attest, the bids that we are now getting in for city work and the bids that we're being told for private work are extremely high right now.
But from a good news standpoint, and this is very recent news from our architect, is that his cost estimators are saying that things are starting to at least stabilize. The values may not necessarily, or the costs may not be coming down, but they're not showing up all over the place like they were a few months ago.
Any other thoughts or directions on this?
Looks good.
Thank you very much. Well done.
Thank you, sir.
Lisa, if you'll come up. What we'd like to do is take the remainder of the workshop tonight, unless there are items that you'd like to further discuss, and really talk about Hurricane Florence, and really show you how your city performed. And to do that, we're going to ask Lisa with Media Services. So, Lisa, the floor is yours.
I think we have a video that we want to show first, which is a visual compilation of what occurred during the storm, how our, how the city staff responded, as well as some of the coverage that we got, both locally and nationally.
It's about an 18-minute video. We apologize for it being so long, but I think you're gonna be very impressed. It's almost a documentary that our media people have put together, so please.
I saw a graphic this morning on the Weather Channel that compared the damage of a Cat 1 to a Cat 2 to a Cat 3 to a Cat 4. The, the damage level on a Cat 1 versus the damage level on a Cat 4, 250 times as much damage in a Cat 4. We have no idea what we're getting ready to experience, but I will tell you, just like you say, it's gonna be something.
The time to take action is now, so what we're asking people to do, and as the mayor of the city of Jacksonville, I am announcing a voluntary, voluntary evacuation of the city, and we are strongly urging evacuation of Jacksonville. We urge you to take action now to find safe shelter in another community outside the storm-impacted area. Please, this is a huge and dangerous storm. Do watch right for you and your family.
Communities throughout the danger zone are responding to that storm surge threat. People are pulling their boats out of the water along the New River in Jacksonville, North Carolina. It's one of many cities expected to see the highest storm surges when the hurricane makes landfall. Adriana Diaz is in Jacksonville watching the preparations. Adriana, good morning.
Good morning. The coast along the Carolinas has dozens of inlets that funnel water into rivers like this one. So, even though we're about 20 miles from the Atlantic, this area is expected to get record storm surge that could go up to 13 feet in the hardest-hit areas. Officials are making boat calls in Jacksonville, North Carolina.
I don't think anybody's on there.
Wildlife officers Taylor Kloninger and Ryan Biggerstaff want this one moved before the storm hits. It shouldn't be tied to this sign, and it's too close to nearby properties.
I look out here, and it looks really calm.
Yeah, but usually, it's just like glass.
Really?
Yeah, you can tell something's going on.
Despite appearances, Jacksonville could get more than two feet of rain in addition to major storm surge.
Good morning. I'm Peter Alexander in New York with an NBC News special. Reported is 5:01 a.m. on the East Coast, and the Carolinas are being swamped by these heavy rains and high winds from Hurricane Florence. Major damage is already being reported. The number of power outages has now jumped to more than 200,000. We are certainly not out of the woods yet. Dangerous water rescues taking place even as we speak. We want to get right to our team on the ground. Joe Friar is in Jacksonville, North Carolina, in the middle of this storm as well. Joe, tell us about the scene there, getting hit.
Well, yeah, that's right, Peter. You can see the wind and rain, obviously a major issue here right now. We are among the 200,000 who have lost power. Our hotel has no power right now, and that happened at nine o'clock last night before the winds were even remotely this powerful. So, this is part one of this storm that's a concern. Jacksonville, keep in mind, it's about a 20-mile drive to even get to the coast, so we're not even on the ocean right now, and we're seeing this. The big concern is gonna be river flooding from here on out.
North Carolina is also getting pummeled by the storm right now. People trapped in homes and hotels, trying to get rescued. ABC's Victor O'Kendo is there right now. Good morning, Victor.
Good morning, Michael. We are getting hammered by Hurricane Florence right now here in Jacksonville. The rain has just been relentless all night long, and now these winds are getting even stronger, right around 80 miles per hour.
We've been following a breaking news story out of Jacksonville, North Carolina. It's a little bit more inland, but there are reports that more than 60 people had to be pulled, rescued this morning overnight from a collapsing motel. So, let's get Sammy Phillips. He's the mayor of Jacksonville, he's with us now. Mayor Phillips, can we start there? What happened with this rescue? Is everybody okay?
Uh, yes, ma'am. This was about, a little bit after 12:30 this morning, when we got a call from a local motor inn, and they were reporting some major damage, or roof damage, and our responders, they, they were, they were in distress. I mean, it's, it's been pretty bad here. But our first responders, police and fire, did go to the scene of the hotel and, and did effect a rescue.
This is Joe Friar in Jacksonville, North Carolina, 20 miles in from the ocean where the storm is wreaking havoc, ripping off part of a roof at the Triangle Motor Inn.
Everything collapsed on us. A big bang, the roof went, and all of the ceiling fell down on us.
Bill Thomas is one of 60 guests who had to be evacuated. He actually lives near Wilmington and was trying to escape the hurricane's path, but the storm found him.
What's your hope right now?
Just to get home, and I'm tired of peanut butter and jelly sandwiches.
The rain is relentless as the wind, with neighborhoods already flooding. Just last night, the New River stopped on the other side of that fence. Today, it's overflowing beyond its banks, a combination of storm surge, high tide, and over a foot of rain here.
This is more than another hurricane. This is a lot more.
Tonight, as floodwaters rise, the drama of Florence is reaching far beyond the coast.
The power of Hurricane Florence nearly tore apart a hotel built out of cinder blocks in Jacksonville, North Carolina overnight. Police and firefighters managed to rescue about 60 people who were staying there. Adriana Diaz is in Jacksonville, which is just a few miles from Camp Lejeune, one of the largest Marine Corps bases. Adriana, good morning.
Good morning, John. There are no words that could describe what hurricane-force winds could do that could top this visual. Take a look at this. This is a massive 63-year-old oak tree that was toppled by Florence.
We want to give you a, a, an update, and first of all, we'd like to begin by thanking all of you for being patient throughout this storm and adhering to the curfew that, that we set before you in order to keep our emergency personnel safe while they're doing their job out, out in the public. Please bear with us. We, we have a lot of work to do in the next few days assessing the damage and ensuring that people are safe.
We're still seeing some of the heaviest bands of rain yet this morning, unlike yesterday. It's now going up and down as opposed to sideways, but it is still coming down. Incredible amounts of water, so much water. Here in Jacksonville, we're standing on Court Street, and right here is basically where the street comes to an end. The farther you go down here, you can see this is where the flooding starts for a few blocks. This neighborhood is underwater. You take a look there in the middle of the street, there's a car that's largely underwater with the trunk open. We can tell you, when we were here last night, that car was not here, so it appears that the floodwaters actually pushed that car into the location it's at right now. And just two or three minutes ago, right in front of that car, we saw six deer walk through those floodwaters going from right to left. Now, Jacksonville is about a 20-mile drive from the ocean, but it does sit along the, a river, the New River, which is prone to flooding. So, they've been preparing for the possibility of river flooding here. Dangerous and dramatic from the air. The Coast Guard on urgent rescue missions has plucked dozens of people from their homes. Some communities cut off.
It was waist-deep inside the house, and then, once we got off the porch, it was up to our shoulders.
We were with this Swift Water Rescue Team overnight as they evacuated desperate residents from Richlands, North Carolina.
Our rivers are already overflowing, and we're just gonna get more water coming downstream, and it has nowhere else to go.
As crews scramble to restore power to hundreds of thousands of people in the Carolinas, there's now a massive run on food and gas. Lines stretch for hours.
A hot meal is gonna be real nice.
If the wait for this slow-moving storm seemed endless, so does its aftermath. The rain has stopped, but the concern now is all that water heading downstream. The New River has overtopped its banks, and it's expected to crest at record levels in
NBC's Joe Friar is out in Jacksonville, North Carolina with that angle. Joe?
Kate, those who've lived in this neighborhood since the 80s say they had never seen it flood before, but as you can see, all of that changed today. The flooding started this morning, and the waters rose so quickly, it caught many here off guard. In fact, a number of people were stranded inside their homes and needed to be rescued. That's when Good Samaritans descended upon this community with boats, helping to get people to higher and drier ground. Those who were saved today were grateful. What was going through your mind?
I'm not gonna make it out. I'm not gonna make it out. So, it's, it's a blessing to have people that still, you know, care about you and risk their lives for you.
Overflowing rivers and creeks are to blame for the flooding in Jacksonville. It has now been raining here nonstop for about 50 hours.
We did have approximately 33 inches of rain in some parts of Jacksonville, so you can see that we have a lot of flooding, a lot of flooded streets. We have people that are stranded, still stranded in their homes, and we are still continuing to rescue operations to try to get those people to safety. So, please, show, have some patience. We're very proud of what we've seen so far, but we need to continue to have patience, and hopefully this storm will finish and pass us so that we can really get down to the hard work of getting our community back together again.
I would just like to say to the citizens of Jacksonville who are both near and far away, you will be proud to know that the city of Jacksonville employees have really stepped up with this particular challenge that Hurricane Florence has brought to the city.
I am so proud, so very proud of our city employees. Proud that I was once an employee myself, proud to be on the city council, to have, to be able to work with people who are responding above and beyond the normal call of duty.
Well, with Hurricane Florence leaving us, the city was certainly devastated, but over the last several days, one city has stood tall. As you can see, the debris field behind me, city and contractor are making major strides towards cleaning up the city. We now have the major chipping machine in, which will grind this into mulch. But overall, citywide, everybody is pitching in, proving that we are indeed a one-city. We're going to take you on a tour to give you an update, so you can see around the community.
We're from all over the country. We're helping the homeowners get the trees off the house, carpet the roofs, clean out the inside of the house with the mudding and, you know, dry, drywall, wet furniture, things of that nature.
This entire week, we have partnered with Kentucky Baptist Disaster Relief, and so every single day from 11 o'clock to 1 o'clock, and then 5 to 6:30, we have been feeding between 7,000 and 10,000 people every single day. So, we're partnering with them, and we're also partnering with the Red Cross. And so, the Red Cross has had emergency relief vehicles that have been taking thousands of lunches and dinners to the outlying areas of Onslow County.
We are serving our community today, and we are part of the One City, Our City, My City campaign. Our members have just been donating their funds and donating their time to reach out to our community. So many people have been displaced, and I think that is the story of this particular hurricane that a lot of people are missing, is that so many people were displaced, so many people actually left the area, came back, did not have food. Food was spoiled, they had to get rid of it. Other people who were displaced because of damages in their property, and so we're just trying to fill in that gap of being a blessing to the people in our community.
As our apostle is a member of the mayor's One City Faith Niggas Committee, we're promoting that today, just letting everybody know we're just one-city today. And as you can see, diverse crowd here, of all ages, all situations, everybody, some
Outstanding. Hey, everybody.
How are you guys doing?
How are you doing?
You know, you don't think of firefighters who are going into water and pulling people out, but that's what you guys had to do. They saved a Medal of Honor winner, you know, 81-year-old Medal of Honor winner. We're gonna put y'all in charge of electricity. Thanks, y'all, for everything y'all did. You did a great job.
How are you guys? Thanks for everything you guys have done.
Thank you all very much.
That was just a bit of what happened over the last couple of weeks. Media services, part of our role as the EOC, is to support what our first responders do. We hope that we did that in a small way. Kevin Riepel and Alan Covey and Kim Tillman worked hours and hours to bring, you know, to help tell the story and get the word out to others about what was happening during the storm, and to keep people safe, help keep them safe. I will also like to share with you some of the ways that we delivered information to our citizens. One of our key roles also is to make sure that we get those important messages out to folks. Many in this transient community have never experienced a hurricane before and were asking many, many questions to us. And so we reached out through G10 TV, of course. When we lost cable, we were still able to broadcast and stream on G10TV.org, as well as Facebook, Twitter. And of course, we sent messages out through our Jacksonville Connect. We produced over 128 storm-related produced videos that went on G10, G10TV.org, as well as, some of them appeared on Facebook as well. We had a lot of coverage. The eyes were on us for this, the last two weeks, from all over the nation. Some of our local newspapers and television channels were there to cover, as well as some of the, pretty much all of the nationals as well, including the Washington Post, a paper as well, but all of the networks, the broadcast networks. And we even had coverage internationally through Canada, France, Australia. I might be missing some of the coverage that we have, but those are just some of the videos that we were able to see afterwards, and some of the news coverage that we were able to find afterwards. Of course, while we were going through the storm, we had no connectivity, so we had no idea what people were saying about us at that time. So on our social media, which seemed to be pretty much the main way that we were able to communicate with our citizens, we put out more than 100 posts, storm-related posts during that time, with a variety of messages of safety and what was happening. We reached more, over a million folks, which is just phenomenal reach for us. Our typical two-week period might be around 40,000. So to go from 40,000 to over a million was... It means people were watching and wanting to know what was going on with us. And we did 17 live feeds, at least one daily. And those live feeds were the messages from the EOC, from you folks, from our police and fire and first responders. And we also produced 10 videos for Facebook as well that told the story beyond what was happening in the EOC, but actually showed images of the storm while it was occurring, as well as the recovery after. We also had, not everybody listens or taps into or is on Facebook, but a lot of our followers are also on Twitter as well. So we made sure that those same messages also made it out to Twitter. And we were receiving very similar messages of concern, of questions about what was happening from our followers on Twitter as well. We had some viral posts as well. So viral, if you're not sure what that means, it means a post that just kind of takes off, where our initial reach might be 10,000 folks, and they share it with 10,000, and they share it with 10,000, and it just becomes a viral thing, where people all over the nation might be watching in. The largest was a half a million people were reached by one of the posts that we had put out during the storm with about, it looks like 17 images of what was actually happening at that time. We also know that we were reaching folks. They were very engaged. There were over 73,000 reactions, comments, and shares that we saw on Facebook over that two-week period. And what that told us was, is that people were really, not always asking us questions necessarily during that reach, but they were sharing to others. They were reaching out to, trying to reach out to their family and friends, trying to check on their neighborhoods, asking us direct questions, those types of things. And so with those direct questions, we responded to more than 1,000 messages and, you know, obviously gave them the best answer that we could. Some of the most frequent messages from our citizens were, in the beginning, where and how to evacuate, safety concerns and preparation, and how to prepare their property and also the conditions of their property during the storm. As I said before, they were trying to connect with others and checking on the safety of others and the condition of their neighborhoods. And checking on the safety of others, there were actually, I'll just say that there were some messages that we also determined, you know, we needed to share with the EOC, we needed to share with police. We directed them to the different entities where they could get help and move on. After the storm, people wanted to know when they were gonna get their power back. Was their water safe to drink? When were they going to get cable again? Food and gas became a very big source of concern as well. And, you know, so we directed them to sources that we could find and that were being brought to us as well. The road conditions and closures were a big concern. Those who did evacuate were trying to find their way back. And they came to us, as well as to others, to find those roots home. We also took a moment during, a couple days after the crux of the storm, to just reach out to citizens and have something just a little bit more positive that they could react to, and ask them to share their One City moments. And they did have many moments that they did share with us, which, if you will allow me, I'll just go through slides and show you some of those moments. Obviously, we know that the hotel that lost its roof, we rescued 60 or so evacuees from there and brought them to the public safety complex. Our police and fire folks and emergency personnel helped out in that. We... I don't know how many water rescues we had, but I think our fire and emergency services went above and beyond there to help out with those rescues, getting people to safety away from flooding. We had many long hours for all of our staff, for our police, our fire, just all of the city crews that helped us support that, that we don't necessarily always see, like our transit folks and parks crews and streets crews, were all out there, just 24 and 7, helping to repair. We've seen this image a couple times as well. People in the community, like, reached out to us and shared some images. These ladies were nurses at Onslow Memorial, and they worked three days straight, I think, during this, during the storm. Neighbors downtown, if you look at the image on the left, were helping other neighbors to build a bulkhead so that they wouldn't lose some of their property due to the flooding. On the right, some of the city staff were checking out the waterways and trying to rescue some fish on that day. Planet Fitness offered free showers and AC to folks, which was great. So it wasn't just the city staff, it was the community just stepped up and helped each other. These are some Marines from Camp Lejeune coming to the Lejeune Memorial Gardens. You'll notice the Eagle Globe and Anchor in the background is the entryway to the future Marine Museum of the Marines. And some crews coming from out of state, and some from in-state, but some from out of state as well, to help repair the memorial gardens, which I think they are still working on repairing at this point, so that we'll have it ready for October 23rd, the Beirut Memorial Observatory's coming up. Neighbors were helping out. Folks came from all over the United States. This gentleman here that spoke to us from Samaritan's Purse said that everyone in his group were all from different states, that just up and left and came to help out. City crews not only helped to clean out public ways and the streets, but they were helping their neighbors and folks in neighborhoods to clear their areas as well. Wally Hansen, our Director of Public Services, was out. He was out with some city crews, just clearing some trees off the streets. We had a ton of downed trees. I know you all have seen the images, and we've all been looking at the images after the storm, but it sure did look like a war zone out there. So sanitation pitched in as well. Onslow Community Outreach opened up their doors, and droves of people from throughout the community came and donated goods and clothing and just essential things needed for survival for those in need. The day that they opened up their doors, people just started showing up with that. The Red Cross was obviously there, feeding folks with their trucks, but also they delivered goods to people's homes who couldn't get out, had no means to travel or to walk. And as we saw in the video, the disaster relief folks from Kentucky helped to feed those as well. The Catalyst Church opened up a grocery store for folks, where they could just come in and choose the things that they needed. These youth here were volunteers from the youth center at the Catalyst Church. And the Abundant Life Ministries also had a day, not only of feeding, but they had folks giving out tennis shots, they were giving clothing, and doing whatever they could to help out the community. So this is, all of these images are just a true testament to how this community is, truly lives up to the One City campaign. These are just more volunteers. I think some of these images we may have seen already. I do want to mention one more One City moment, if I might. The Civic Affairs Committee did want to step up, and this was a couple days before, for the storm. Patriot Day, September 11th, that they didn't, they wanted to continue that vow to not forget. Florence did not deter us from pausing to remember. And even though the rain was already starting a couple days ahead of time, we decided, just as a safety measure, that we would have this ceremony inside to remember those who perished during the terrorist attacks on September 11th. Our firefighters, honor guard, were there to do, to participate. We had our local Marines and police officers and firefighters there as well, who all participated in the ceremony. The 2nd Marine Division Band Ensemble, I believe, was there. We could not fit the entire 2nd Marine Division Band into council chambers, so we had a smaller version of that. And Jacksonville High School, the String Quartet was there also to provide some musical interludes for us. And it was well-attended by the community. And that is it.
I'd like to ask Susan if she would come back up. We have an idea that we would like to suggest to you to help us bid farewell to Florence. So Susan, if you would.
All right. So I'm back, and like everybody else, you know, we wanted to try and do something from the recreation and Parks Department. My staff came to me, literally just a few days ago last week, and said, "We really just, intrinsically, we want to provide programs and activities to help people enjoy their time and just try and forget and move on, and give them something positive." So we brainstormed a little bit, and I talked to Dr. Woodruff, and he wanted me to, I guess, propose to you that we would like to give some sort of farewell to Florence event to the public and provide something for everybody to just have a good time, free to the public. Kids can enjoy themselves, parents can enjoy themselves, and we can, in some instances, just make light of this and move on. We have an event that was somewhat planned on October 19th. It's an evening event. We thought that was actually a good tie-in, considering no one had power. So we're gonna have some glow-in-the-dark activities inside the commons, but also live entertainment, any amusements we can acquire, food trucks, just lots of activities, and just put it out there. Let's just have fun and provide something for, not only the public to enjoy, the employees to enjoy, and just give back in a sense that we are good at, and that is providing some good activities and recreation for everybody to enjoy. The staff are excited to be able to provide it. We have some new folks in our special events division. And we would just like to ask you if it's okay. We would need just a little bit of money, maybe 5,000 to 8,000, depending on what we can acquire at this point. We put feelers out, but we haven't confirmed anything. We told them we'd get back with them tomorrow, but I think Dr. Woodruff can work some magic for us if it's okay with you. We would love to do something on a quick turnaround and say farewell to Florence.
If you're looking for a bonfire, I got plenty of it.
Yes, ma'am.
On that note, let's end on this. You know, you've all seen, and I think we have a live feed now from the Center for Public Safety that shows the debris. For the next several weeks, we're going to have this live feed from the Center for Public Safety. You can look across to the old Onslow Insight, and you can see the debris. What's amazing is, in the last 10 days, the contractor has brought into that site over 130,000 cubic yards of material. Now, that's kind of like saying it's a metric ton, or something is, you know, 10 millimeters. Nobody knows what that is. So let me put that in perspective. If you took a football field, goalpost to goalpost, sideline to sideline, 12 feet deep, we've already done six of those. Six football fields completely full of debris. And we probably have another 12 to 18 of those football fields to fill. We got a long way to go, but we've come a long way. The nice thing is, working with, through Wally and the leadership that he and Public Works are providing, and the contractor, which is Crowder Gulf, this city has tremendously recovered. I mean, I can tell you, right around the city, there's a lot of stuff out there. But there's a lot of stuff that... But there's a lot of stuff that wasn't out there today that was out there two weeks ago or even a week ago. A lot of communities still have a lot of debris. We want to stress to people, though, we need your cooperation in getting this material out. You know, remember what we asked about piles. One pile for horticulture, because that goes to this chipping site. One pile for any type of building material, even if it's decking or fencing, that doesn't go where the horticultural goes. That goes where the CND material is, because it's going to line up a different place. Furniture, white goods, and so forth in another place. And then always remember your recycling containers and your regular garbage. Now, the city crews are back. Carrie Terrell has done a phenomenal job leading that effort. The city crews are back on regular schedule. Wednesday, which is tomorrow, we will be out with our crews doing horticultural pickup. And also, we'll be doing some light pickup of other items. Also, later this week, the contractor is going to begin to pick up throughout the community, throughout the city, other debris-type items. As you know, for the first 10 days, we concentrated strictly on horticulture. We're now able to begin, because this contractor brought in 30, literally 30, of those huge vehicles. You have seen them. The front vehicle, you know, has a loading mechanism on it. The front vehicle can carry about 70 cubic yards. That's a lot. The back vehicle can carry about 30 cubic yards. And then every time they arrive at this site, they are bringing a phenomenal amount of material to the site. So we hope that over the next several days, everybody will work to get as much debris out to the streets as possible. And probably, Wally, what, 40 to 50% of the city, we have picked up everything one time from horticulture. We will need for you to contact your insurance companies, get all of the debris from inside your house out to the curb. It may sit there for a month or more, but we need for it to begin to get out there. We also need, if you have trees down in your backyard, if you have trees on your house, take plenty of pictures and begin to get that material out to the curb line also. We do anticipate that the contractor is going to be with us probably until Thanksgiving. It's a long time. But that's how badly impacted the city of Jacksonville is. At the end of the day, though, I want to always remember what you saw. One city stood tall. I can be proud of what the mayor put together in the One City campaign. We thank you for y'all's leadership. I especially thank the city employees, because I think you'll agree, they have gone above and beyond and our city is the better for the leadership and the dedication of your employees. With that, that concludes all the items that we have and we look forward to continued recovery efforts.
Quick question before we close. Are we going to receive any windfall from the, I think the governor made some pledge of so much money for mosquito control that he was going to pass down to certain counties?
What we have learned, Mayor, is the windfall was actually four different types of mosquitoes that were blown in.
Well, that makes sense. That makes better sense.
You are correct.
I understand it was like $4 million that was going to be appropriated to certain counties in the eastern North Carolina.
We may be getting some of those funds. At this point, the details are still being worked out.
But we are spraying as fast as we can.
But we are spraying, both larviciding and spraying. Interestingly enough, the larviciding is not recoupable or recoverable from FEMA, although that's the way you kill the mosquitoes best. But the spraying chemicals, they are recoverable. Also, just as a final note, as of the close of business Sunday, we had already spent $1.8 million, $1.8 million just on the horticultural recovery program for Jacksonville City.
Was it Matthew who spent a million or was it Irma? One of those early ones.
Gil, what did we spend for Irene? Do you remember?
It was Irene. My million sticks in my mind. This gentleman probably remembers that million.
It's a penny.
Nothing's sticking in my mind. Sorry.
Mayor, that concludes the items we have for you.
Thank you. Anybody else? With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
All in favor?